We will now begin the confirmation hearing this morning for Ms. Luella Ichehara Marchiano, nominated to be the resident executive of the Indigenous Affairs Office. But before we begin our procedure this morning, I'd like to ask everyone to please rise and observe a moment of silence for the late former Speaker Pedro Rogolofoy Delion Guerrero, who passed away yesterday. Thank you. Buenos dias, les sor ma mai para todos samzo. It is now 10:13 a.m. on this Tuesday, April 2, 2024, and I want to welcome everyone to your Senate chamber present here this morning. We will begin our confirmation hearing of Ms. Luella Ichehara Marchiano, nominated by Governor Palacios and Lieutenant Governor Apetang on February 1, 2024, to serve as a resident executive of the Indigenous Affairs Office, a prestigious office established in 1985 pursuant to Article III, Section 23 of the CNMI Constitution, and to our viewing public on local channel 23. Saludos an benedidut para todos samzo lokui ni maneega. Guini gi halomi gi salan midzu. Iman presenti gi pahenani legislatura, gi za Facebook zan i YouTube. I am Selena Babauta, and I serve as the Chairwoman for the Senate Standing Committee of Executive Appointments and Government Investigations. Zaupau gu na beu rekonisa si Senor Devin Macarons para huagangiman presentisi ano member ni komitea. Senor Macarons.
Senator Selena Arbabauta.
Presenti.
Senator Karina El Magofnia.
Guaiga.
Senator Paul A. Manglonia.
Here.
Senator Donald M. Manglonia. Madam Chair, three members are present, one member is absent.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Macarons. With three members present, we have the necessary quorum to conduct today's meeting. Senator Donald is joining us virtually in a few minutes. For the meantime, he is excused for now until he joins us. Antis di tafansigi mo'na pa hu fais samzo ni ko'opreshon midzu. Todos, por favor, na fan silenshu i telephone midzu kosaki hu menos istobu gidurantini junta pau guna ogan. By introducing pau gu indibizuasi ani man mana sisisti guini na komitea. Todo ad bisu ligat. Zan porilai siha mafatu guini ni abudgadon momia Senor Jose Bermudez. Iomasi sisti komitea para unaguaha report gaigisi Senor Devin Macarons. I mo manenea todi kosasihani monaposisibli para ta publikas di para i publiku ganouzungi gi cables, gi YouTube, zan gi Facebook gaigisi Senor Delbert Camacho. Kosaki hugaha ariglu mangai gi Sergeant-at-Arms as Senor Benjamin Terlahi zan gaigiganohuzungsi Senor John Delion Guerrero. I will now recognize Senator Karina Magofnia for the proper motion to adopt today's agenda.
Move to adopt today's agenda.
Thank you. A motion has been made and it has been seconded. Are there any objections to the agenda? There being no objections raised, the agenda is duly adopted at this time. Ta kunsigi mo'na, artikulutres. Pa ikumbida pau gu si Senor Paul Rages zan ni ma'apunta as Senora Luella Marchiano. Pero den fanhami guini alam. I obligation niya si Senor Paul Rages para hu introducing i ma'apunta gata gi komitea. You may proceed, Mr. Rages, when you are ready.
Good morning. Hafadei antiro. Chairwoman Selena Arbabauta, honorable members of the Executive Appointments and Government Investigations Committee. For the record, my name is Jean-Paul B. Rages, Acting Special Assistant for the Administration under the Office of the Governor. On behalf of the Honorable Governor Arnold I. Palacios and Honorable Lieutenant Governor David M. Apetang, I thank you for the opportunity to appear before you here today. I am pleased to introduce Ms. Luella I. Marchiano as the Governor's nominee for the Resident Executive for Indigenous Affairs. Required documents have been submitted which outlines her professional experience and education. Ms. Marchiano is an accomplished professional with over 19 years of experience serving both the CNMI government and private sector. Throughout her career, she has made significant contributions within our community, driving positive changes and progress in various areas. Her dedication and commitment to her work have been invaluable, and her expertise have been instrumental in achieving successful outcomes. She holds an Associate of Arts degree in Education from the Northern Marianas College, a Bachelor's of Arts in Education from the University of Guam, and Master's of Education from Farmington State College. Governor Palacios and Lieutenant Governor Apetang place their full trust and confidence in Ms. Marchiano to serve as resident executive for the Indigenous Affairs. Her professional experience, credentials, and commitment to serving the Commonwealth in this capacity make her a viable candidate. I know she stands ready to answer your questions and present her plans for the future, and we kindly ask for your expeditious approval. Thank you, Sisus, Mosses, and Gilissa, for the opportunity to appear or introduce her to this August body, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Rages. We will now move on to public comments. I ask that if you are providing a statement, please identify yourself and the entity you represent, and please provide a copy of your statement to our Sergeant-at-Arms so that we can make it a part of the records. Ad beto pau gu ipisu para tori po fan mana i testimonio. And I open the floor at this time for public comments.
Hafare, good morning, Senator Selena Babauta, and members of this honorable body, Senator Paul Manglonia, Senator Karina Magofnia, and the legal council, and everyone in here, the staff. And good morning, Ms. Marchiano. I'm gonna read off my testimony, Senator, so I can... Let me get my eyeglass first. If you're wondering, Senator, why I came first? Because there's a lot back there, and I have some important appointment down in the hospital. April 2, 2024, Executive Appointments, Senator Babauta. Hafare, Senator Borah. Here with, I submit my testimony in opposition to the nominee of the Resident Executive Director for Indigenous Affairs. She is an educated individual with many years of teaching at our public school system. However, this important office to the Tautotanu Iman Chamoru of the Northern Mariana Islands under Article III, Section 23 of our Constitution is a critical office to protect the best interests of the indigenous people of the Mariana Island, specifically Chamoru of the Northern Marana Island. Furthermore, she was a candidate in the House of Representatives under the Democratic Party. With her political history, it is not in the business interest of the Chamoru people, the thousands of Chamoru people, to lead this constitutional office if she is confirmed in this important office. It is my regret to arrive at this disposition in opposition to the nominee, Ms. Luella, because I have a deep cultural and mangafa in Chamoru, familia in Chamoru pidgin, Spanish pidgin, to her grandmother from her maternal side of her lineage. The late Tunhari is my grandmother's brother from my maternal lineage who married the late Tanadela Ichehara Cruz. I believe she is that's her grandmother's sister, who had personally spent countless hours, days, and years in Tinian, where I grew up, assisting them on whatever my late mother, Andressina Cruz Untalan Hofschneider, instructed me to do. For example, mow their lawns, pick up their trashies, sweep and mop their floors. Beautiful house, huge house, maybe six rooms. And they don't have any kids, by the way, until they adopted another one later on. Perform errands to stores and etc. on the community for my elders Iman Yanahu. The most important thing I remember was that Tanadela, Ichehara Cruz, and Tunari, their wife made the best sushi and other Chamoru food that I look forward to helping them in their residence. If I'm going to decide on my relationship with my elders Iman Amku, then I want to definitely support you with this nomination. But this position that Governor Arnold I. Palacios decided to appoint you to lead for the man Chamoru of the Mariana Islands for centuries to come, there's thousands of Chamoros, and it's critical to the continued survival of the thousands of Tautotanu in the Mariana Islands for centuries to come. Under the CNMI Constitution, that this office is mandated to perform by the Resident Executive Director, the nominee is not qualified with the task and the huge constitutional duties and obligation to effectively carry out the best interests of the indigenous population. Therefore, I strongly urge Governor Palacios, if you're listening, Mr. Governor, to withdraw the nominee from this appointment, but with Ms. Marchiano's educational and experience, appoint her to work and assist her in the Indigenous Affairs Office in another capacity, because this mandate is really huge and the survival of the Chamoru cultural heritage from archaeological sites, you know, that are being desecrated left to right even today along the highway and anywhere. And of course, they're gonna name Oliai Cultural Center and Oliai Sports Center in the traditional Chamoru of Catanjuda, where the Chamoros name San Jose is very critical for us, the Chamoros, and the language now, where we are lacking Chamoru teachers in instructional. And of course, the CNMI government is playing a major role in the desecration and dispossession of our land and heritage and the ocean and everywhere that the Chamoros have traditional access. Por senoa, Sisus Mossi, Mr. and Ms. Chairman, and I urge members of the Rota delegation, the Tinian delegation, and the Saipan delegation to look at what we're saying here as indigenous people Iman Tautotanu Iman Chamoru, because this office, of course, she's qualified, no doubt about it, and I congratulate her for her experience, and I congratulate her and thank you for teaching my son. My son, Richard, now he's almost finished at the University of Hawaii. And thus, I thank you very much. But this office is so huge that the governor is playing a, they call it, with dynamite in the political structure of the indigenous people in the Mariana Islands. And I urge the governor one more time, withdraw this nomination and appoint just thousands of Chamoros who are educated, experienced in the private sector and in the government that he, within his own party, the Democratic Independent Coalition Administration, can appoint. Sisus Mossi, and danklona Sisus Mossi nun na izunistina putinat, and danklona dispossession by Luella, because it's very hard for me, you know, to decide on my position, and it's really my family over the constitutional mandate of Article III, Section 23, that's mandated for thousands of Chamoros out there that needed the help of this office. We don't need to repeat the late Manglonia, which is critical, that disaster for us as indigenous people, but we need someone that can appease and balance the interests of the Chamoru people and the community of the CNMI. And I urge the rejection of this nominee and withdraw. Thank you very much, Sisus Mossi.
Sisus Mossi, Senor Hofschneider.
And I'll submit this for your record.
Yes, please.
Danklona Sisus Mossi.
Sisus Mossi. The floor is still open for public comments.
You need a job. They need to hire you and do a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Hofschneider. The floor is still open for public comments.
Buenos dan hafadei antiro. I'm chairwoman and senators. My name is Peter Perez. What you're looking at is a modern Chamoru. I regret to say I don't look like my father, but I am a Sablan, a Pangalinen, a Tudela. I'm a Rages, I'm a Dias, and I'm a Perez. And I love my culture. It belongs to me. I think that the number one qualification for this very important position is that you love your culture and that you have the capacity to do good work. I don't think that the person in charge of the resident executive is charged with doing everything that has to be done, but rather they're part of a community, they're part of a team, and we all need to work together. I have personal experience with the candidate today. I don't know if that's the right word, but I have personal experience with Ludella in her capacity as acting resident executive. And in the short time that she's been holding, she's held that position, she has stood with us to talk to public lands and remove an obstacle to our putting canoes on our beaches to provide jobs for our people. And we're talking about 70 jobs as sailors and to provide an attraction. So hopefully, we can get our tourists back, particularly the very, very good Japanese tourists. So I just think I have, I have experience with Indigenous Affairs for quite a while, been through several of the resident directors, and together we have had canoe camps. We built Tugalidi. We built a dudali, which is a 15-foot Chamoru canoe. Those are actually the property of Indigenous Affairs. We built them in a boatyard that we are allowed to use because of Indigenous Affairs. We launched them from the Guma Sakmen, which is provided by Indigenous Affairs. So they are our number one partner with the government, and we need that partnership to survive. I think that everyone involved, since my wife and I co-founded 500 Sales, have been here. We have such a strong partnership with the government, and it's working. And we have many, many partners in the community. But of all of them, Indigenous Affairs is the number one partner. And I know I have every faith from personal experience that this is the right person for the job. So thank you, Sisus Mossi.
Sisus Mossi, Senor Perez. The floor is still open for public comments.
Hafadei antiro, and good morning to our senators and staff present here today. Good morning to our resident executive director nominee, Ms. Luella. I have, my name is Christina Sablon. I'm a resident of Saipan and a person of Northern Marianas descent. And I'm here in support, strong support, of the nomination of Ms. Luella Marchiano to the position of Resident Executive Director for Indigenous Affairs. I have known Luella for years now. She's a dear friend and a trusted colleague. I've worked with her in various capacities and endeavors in our community. And I have always known her to be a natural leader and a problem solver. She's a very organized administrator, a dedicated, longtime educator, and truly passionate about public service, taking care of community, and preserving and promoting our cultural heritage. She is both Chamoro and Rafalowash. She speaks both languages. And I know this personally because she's such a great coach, a teacher at her core in teaching me how to pronounce words in both languages. She's very good about that. And I see her as really the perfect person who can bring both cultures together and bring unity and healing in our community and collaboration. I know she'll work closely and work well with the Carolinian Affairs Executive Director to promote and celebrate both of our beautiful indigenous cultures. I have no doubt in my mind that Ms. Luella Marchiano will continue to serve our community well in this new role. Thank you.
Sisus Mossi, former Congressman Tina Sablon. The floor is still open for public comments.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Senator Magofnia, Senator Manglonia. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm in support for the nominee of the governor, Lieutenant Governor. I'm so proud of them for nominating someone that is part Carolinian and part Chamoro. I am part Carolinian, but I don't even know how to speak the language. So I'm so proud of you for keeping that tradition. And she is qualified. You know, she is qualified to represent us, the indigenous people, and the Carolinian, both. Thank you, Madam Chair.
May I ask you to please state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Annie Cholahi Pickleheimer.
Thank you, Ms. Pickleheimer. The floor is still open for public comments.
Buenos dias. My name is Leila Staffler, and I'm a citizen of the CNMI, and I am also an NMD. And I'm here to support my sister, Ms. Luella Marchiano. And I'm just very proud of her for all the work that she's done. She's been an excellent administrator, as Tina had shared. Because of her educational background, I know she's really good at multitasking in multiple ways. And so she will be able to juggle all the different things that come at her from all different sides with ease and grace, because that is who she is. I know that she is more than qualified with all of her various degrees, but more than anything, because of her love of the culture, because of her deep recognition and understanding of the multifaceted place that we live in and how important that we embrace and respect, respect all parts of what we call home and what we consider in this Marianas. I support her appointment, and I wish her the best of luck. Thank you.
Sisus Mossi, former Congresswoman and now Secretary of Labor, Ms. Leila Staffler. The floor is still open for public comments.
Amaga umugaan, lesor maamai ngali kemi, bal olumai remi, nera obtoto, ber mihe, versibo titillap rela io, ya Governor Ihila, ihala nominatli para rebu aweringali, aramasar. Man matitpaoguna ogan, put para ta ina, para ta kula, ihazi i unoraplinagubinnotas Arnold Palacios, haganzi para u atituzi, nu gumihi lu i i ofisinan Indigenous Affairs Office gun gizota Constitution. By the way, guahui la hinmidzu, itze lun midzu, ibisinun midzu, istudantin midzu, si John Oliver Bolis Palacios Cabrera de los Reyes Pangilinan Gonzalez. Ungan, go masanoku, nonugizokun mami classmate, right Congressman Ed Probst, my classmate? I was a long, I was a classmate with the longest name, I mean, not to mention I beat them in running and in math and spelling up on the bulletin boards. It is my honor and really I'm humbled to be here today. Para tadanya i za ta abiba, tariskata, i inatsagli i zan i, 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 zinauzo gihinolum intalotagialum iman, uh, fazi maoluki interaminti Marianas. If you're nuguini, hagan Marianas. A true, true attestation, demonstration of how far we have gone from a homogeneous society to one that is a melting pot of diversity and a celebration of our prosperity. How cool is that? Right? No longer is our, uh, no, arus kaddu, no longer is our alaguan kalamasa, just kalamasa. Dog tu da halum i, nozofama i zimaoluki kaddun, no fo bai kaddun champion, no, za ta abiba imtinautauta, no, sasi zuu ustodu madzik, para ouna fandanya itautautya, gi guinaiza, zalinya multiply don minus. Za gaigi fiomta i meknota, ihagan Marianas. Motuzu because man hami, man dankulu zan Siluella, gaigizu gi districtri, bulan na nagana mami pano da, za bulagi angu sa una konyo tutsu pano da, malingui bisnis ngang. Za, when I was being bullied because my father was an immigrant construction worker, I had to go next door to our Carolinian, you know, fellow children, I ate at Tun Keosikileleman, at, you know, taco, at their house, and little did I know, Tun Josono, si, si Damoa, everybody there, si Chatgualaf, si Nanselia, si Nanizang Mamis, who taught me how to read the Chamorro, tiutza itsi itutza, idinbenan nu Fahtima, by the way. And I would eat at their homes, man hami, and for those that are wondering, if I sild ngangi hule wukupas Rafalowash, there you go. I was eating may with them, we went fishing, talaza, everything else, and we ate together, we slept together, because that was my refuge, that was my sanctuary growing up. But I did not give them chance in running and in spelling and math, because I'm Speedy Gonzalez, not, not for, for something. Lo, I wanna celebrate our people, man za ta abiba, itze zuzuus niara fandanya itauta, iman, nozakataimanu narosa zan rasun, zanginta tsotsak isinsinta, we all bleed red. Pan maasi, za ta fanmaggim kurasonta, za ta abiba itinautauta, sa hafa ispiosta, zan haga matauta para imanauta tina famagoonta. And so I'm here, long story short, para ta toktok, zan ta pipit, zan ta isgayun, za ta taduzuti, i nomination as Luella Fausto Aldon, Ichihara Marchiano, za utasedigu, za uspiyimpeyu, za na locla ikutura Chamorro, sa hafa stigi ma inkotga para u atituzia man isinya. Ma extra, apinitizi famagoonta, za qualificao zan kapas para u tsogui itze zu. But before, so that I don't take the, the times away from the rest, I wanna request our soon-to-be-confirmed Indigenous Affairs Executive Assistant. Por si gizomunu homework. And I, as a cultural practitioner, I've been performing in cultures for nineteen eighty-five, and I've been traveling and performing, and lately I've been doing a lot of chanting because it's important. Can you do signage in Chamorro? In all of our legislature, in our congress, our buildings, and everywhere, in businesses, in hotels, in stores? Because if a magunta, man malilefasta, za imanyainna, ugogogamzu, por favor, poru i telefongi umbanda za, ta fanagi famagoonta, ta fanfinut Chamorro, no? Sa dulu i tiktok zan i Snapchat zan man malefai ni famagoon, no? Traditional Chamorro blessings in public functions. Por favor, we need to do those things, and we must have the Indigenous Affairs Office have a more proactive, permanent partnerships with Arts Council, NMC, PSS, Chamorro Cultural Language Heritage Studies, and many of our nonprofits, we just heard from Five Hundred Sales, my primo Pete Perez, and my sister-in-law Emma, and the work that they're all doing, every one of us, CCVI, Alinger, Arts in Education classes, no, zanginwaha, nu pohalum i, i, i tiau, zan i ofasti, takuni ifa magunzo, mali i oftaimanu mentalotza zan todu, za umasinti, za mapinitizi, hafa Chamorro, hafa ifa sild, uh, aramasar Rafalowash, no, pitautaitano. Let's do that. Teaching the language in the, in the, in mortar, brick and mortar in the classroom never works. Bring them out to the lanso, ilansu, itasi, and in the kusinansanizung, and whatnot. Tap the suruwanus and suruanas, and let's do a, ta fanmanonum ni amut Chamorro, okay? Sempi braabu zan i, you know, piha i sepilia zan, na, nu lirubitslofan. Preservation of Chamorro Heritage and Language classes and whatnot in the community, por favor. I wanna see Ms. Luella, uh, go out with her staff to do all of these wonderful things out where it matters, in the outdoors, and be one with nature. And I wish you all the best, ago, bintazuzutiau, za, no, agangham, za ta fanapipit, za ta isgayun, it's never been about us, it's about imanautati, our children, that we leave a lasting legacy of who they are, a self-discovery, and a celebration of what greater things to come. Congratulations, and I urge this esteemed, honorable committee and the Senate to, uh, you know, confirm Speedy Gonzalez, Ms. Luella Fausto Aldon Ichihara Marchiano. Sisus Maasi, Ilisotumakremi.
Sisus Maasi, zan disposasozu Mr. Gonzalez, lotiutugi, nabai, toduruyapuzidunglo, Sisus Maasi ni testimonio, paguniam, ubinidzi komitea. The floor is still open for public comments.
Paguna ogan, distepainyachli, wasuko para be fatu paguna dia, but ahie, sasinya tan anu mi testimonini, lo, disitza takmang ma oganzu, ma message zu, ko baby fatu, zan nu, likungan, lo gi magadi bi baby gaigi airport. Gohu Silianna Sablon, Manglonius Sablon Hofschneider, nu gaigizu gi ni pa bi testeguzi, za pa bi songan hafa shan nu, nu, uh, hinasusuku, zan, uh, recommendenda, zan u, nu, ususudzut igubetnu. Finenina nu, u anoi abiba igubetnu, ni finenina a Baba i ofisinatotti, sa toduratu muongo famasasedigini ni paguma inaugurate, na utsumi ofisinan Indigenous Affairs. Agua dididi nu kubukau, ya ma Baba, Sisus Maasi, Governor Arnu, nu unconsiderazon Baba i ofisinan, sistinofisinan, ti ofisinamu zan ti ofisinawa, ofisinan ni Chamorro ni Constitution ma create in nineteen eighty-five. Often I ma create is the Article Three, Section Twenty-Three, in nineteen eighty-five. Ma fatinas sistinofisinan, ko representa itoto tonu, yani gi gi finut Chamorro, gi rekonu zan i international community Indigenous, gi finu i US Congress, lenya native. Eno importante pa bi plantapago, sa sistinofisinan, ti ofisinan politika, sistinofisinan, ofisinan dankulu ninkotgu i United States Congress, i Commonwealth Government, zan i United Nations, man manon na i sistinofisinan, po na abansa mo na i ofaginagago ni para u, u abansa mo na itoto tonu, za toduruda mu tumungu para ofatana klaru, sa istaguf klaru na itoto tonu man Chamorro. Guahaganu xauzun, nu masosangan, na i Office of Carolinian Affairs, man Chamorro, Iman Indigenous. I Rafalowash napalabra, za bulagi ni muusa, ti palabra, lo i Carolinian English Dictionary asosangan na Rafalowash, zan Falowash kumekilenyah verbatim, lan comma, Saipan quote-unquote our land, and nun atanenei lan Saipan quote-unquote our land, ofa kumekilenyah. Kumekilenyah toto tonu gi finut Chamorro, Indigenous international community, I native gi United States Congress. I beg to differ. Eno na interpretasyon, in nineteen ninety-one, Carolinian English Dictionary, debino man adinanti zo manaklaru, sa I Rafalowash kumekilenyah galu mi dictionary toto satoa, lama truk zan woliya, itoto chuk, ni gohini katan, apetilebi gi magapa bi menshone no, lebi bi songan, sa bulashan nu, mupus manapolilitika, kalanmoni sistinofisinan, ofisinan politika loti politika, obligasyon iski. Gohu ne gi ni North Chuk, i nanahu biya si Maria Parung, ulupoma, nu sanikola Sablon, nu, i ma kuksayu, ti Rafalowash zu, Rechuk zu, ya sagahu zan ifa magunu man gi ni nyap ti man Rafalowash. Ezgi na importante pa ta plate po'lu stigi na gitutunutunya, za basta man afan ma nu tonda hit, na ita man discriminatory sa guaxa u'ungu, man racist ayi, ta sosangan na often ma po'lu gi leblu zan afadinanti gi ni, gi durantini negotiation ezzi na ma fatinas Office of Carolinian Affairs, sa po imbrasa, todudu people from the Carolin Island, ni ma gaigini before nineteen fifty, and I will end there. Often gaigizu gi ni, gaigizu gi ni, nu gosta saka sinienteku actually so goftungu Siluella. Siluella nu federidu mangkulu nu gi, gi, gi saranka, nu u goftungu sina nonya, ustudazi sina nonya, gi durantini i dokashon nu gi, uh, University of Hawaii at Manoa, u gosta to stress anyus ni pa bi ustudazi sina nonya, ofisessesonya, gi durantini esni po ma fortma i Department of Education, uh, alim, i trust territory into the Commonwealth Government. Bulat sesonya, bulat sesonya si difunta Dolores Aldon Ichihara Marchiano para iman Chamorro, za una indankulu na Sisus Maasi para sesonya. Paguna dia gaigini sa ma apunta ka's Governor Arnu, ihagonya. Lo, saka sinienteku, su gaigizu gi ni, ti sinia pa bi supportaya gonya, put estinerason. Ya, ya gonya, itunutunya si educator toduruda tumungu maski qualificao, kumo eno na manera, sistinofisinan ti ofisinan, uh, nu, eno na, nu, tagagogo, sistinofisinan dankulu mandanya, niporo abansa mo na i ofaginagago gi United States Congress, i, i CNMI government, zan i United Nations, para itoto tonu iman Chamorro. Za si nu, Mrs. Marchiano tumi, gi todu kinimprendeku, ilayu sumano gi zi, una halum gi zi, uh, ni mu, mu ma extra, a abansa mo na i, i kuturan i people from the Carolin Island, za ilayu sumano geno. Sigimu na, malunggi politika, ani malunggi politika, kandidatu gi politika, abansu talu mo na, di, di, rerepresentagi kumo Chamorro gi, rerepresentagi kumo, uh, gaigigi i banda ni Carolinian. In fact, gi October twenty-twenty-two, manono zan gurupushana nu gopalo, nu Carolinians, manono para i ofisinan i US Congress, US delegate, Kilili, por omagogo si Kilili adudu ne ezzi Directive, US Directive Fifteen, and para amzuti komimprendia, often on a Directive, vizazi na Directive, matosonic mo na, nipoma na halum, estina palabra, I Rafalowash gi part of the census. Lo gohu mangizu para US nu, nu White House, zo ukspiplika, zona ini dokumentu, ofa kumekilenyah no napalabra. Na actually, and nun usa Rafalowash, kumekilenyah na isatoa lama truk zan woliya, itu representaya palo or chuk, or any other ni man ginover ni zan nineteen fifty, na, na Office of Carolinian Affairs. Eni gi na dokashon i, i Congressu, amzu, zan i, i gubetnu, zan i judicial system have to work on that to educate the public completely and transparently. Uh, i otu nu na gaigizu gi ni, sa gi ni gi March nineteen, nu ufatinas dos semana, uh, mastoftav, para bin ali zan i appointi, ustalekuna bente di sinema punta, wa tempo po ketungu sesonya, zan often ginagago ni ofisinan i Resident Executive of Indigenous Affairs. Ani man motu ami pa man meeting, masanonizu, na twenty minut, twenty minutes atempo mami. Estasi twenty minutes, and nun tumune, debi gi maganon reschedule, sixty twenty minutes para sa'gan pu i Office of Indigenous Affairs, kulani insutu, eni gi tutun mami. Inimunadzani meeting, in extended, za goh guvkonshuzun, baby keep thirty minutes, lo guha nu, ma extended tempo za kana una hora, animunadzani esdi, gua finaisenyah, zan gual ki finaisenyah, na baby na'i gi ofaginagao mami, manoganzu gatugia ofisinanya dosbiay u leaf message, man na'i zu mensahi poro oganzu, so nasisitasonya email address, disipaguna hora, ta'za zoni ma ogan tati. Ti ma susesedi, ti ma shamano ni monozu para yawagini, gi zaga, gua gi nabai gi ni, gi na Congressu, gi Hawaii, gi US Congress, panano na, na, na America, ni monozu, ta'za ni susesedi ta gi ni. Um, i otu, esni na, na problema, nu ti sinia i Governor na posanonizu, na posanonihit, na nu si Ms. Marchiano tumeya, guha na qualified candidate for representa i ofisinan ni Chamorro. Sa i ofisinan ni Chamorro, dankulu namanda ginagago, federidu nuebi, papa, za dankulu zimina nuebi, nu agogogo, bulat zu'zu, sesta forty-eight years di sinima Governor ni, zan twenty-seven years finan di sinema fitmesti. Lo ta'za Chamorro Culture Center, Chamorro Heritage, uh, Chamorro Day, ta'za, nyafa fa, gi zunmizulai ta'za, nyafa. Lo, gohu mu fatinas, zizi Chamorro Language and Heritage Studies, gi twenty-twelve, more than a decade ago, opresenta gatugia you, uh, public school system, the ofaisin kosinia po ma fatinas Department of Chamorro Affairs, or Department of Chamorro, zan i NMC uva faisin. Matuli esdi zan manapolitika talu esdi galu mi ofisinan i public school system. So eno nu malagozu tanaklaru, sa nu, inu, estasi na ofisinan, ti, ti, ti atutugizonya constitutionu mandi, sistinofisinan, mupus politika di situtunutunya. In fact, ma utsumi esdi na putna ofisinan, guess Governor Fittio, manoi one dollar, za gaigesi Senator Paul sinia testeguzi, finenina one dollar gi budget, pues ma po'lu zero dollar gi budget, i constitutional office, pus usanoni, ani ma, impiti Senator, si Governor Fittio, usanonisii, Governor, late Governor Eloyinos, kosinia um Baba, zo faisin kosinian Baba tati, asanonizu saka, amen, ungan, malago gi lo, saka problema isalapi, likumashakwanto, eni okabi premeteo gi nu biras tati gi ni lutu, a Baba si difunto, matugini lutu, sa amanono po ma, poro ma nu confirm, si, uh, pago si George nu, nu Kim Tenorio, zan ya matutati magan na a Baba, anama oganzu ni munadzigi zonya dialysis lenya Liana esta munadzan, di kususmaasi apega forty-seven thousand, ta'za gua, sesta tinutun. Sa dankulu na insutu na ponutsumi ofisinan Chamorro, za ponu, zon Baba i ofisinan nu Carolinian Affairs, zona i kontidan salapi, esgi na classin mandani, di sitatanapara, sa basta man ma tarif spituji, zan ma- Za basta man ma tarif spituzi, zan ma talia zizi itouto tonu. Za sini covenant, zan sini itouto tonu, taza itouto gini man tamorua simpi gua. Nu eni gi debi tanaklaru, se sta itempo nu sigimu na. Gagi gini sha man testigugu zii utunga todisi sha. Za estazu o osun, za i man man testigugu zugu ini lokis o unozu. Para bi facingi porofan manoi tonu zan lugat. Ni poro ma abansa mu na i irencian tamoro. Gi gun manholu, desigina rasono sosangan hofa na ti sinia bi supporta Siluella. Gi guna man ma man ma confirm, parewa zan si difunta Ross. Usupota gi guna ma ma confirm malum unsemana, ah latsi. Debina estini na ofisina upara, edzina maaluk exploitation ma ma premier ma premierte siji gi covenant. Gi constitution gan i US, U- United Nation Declaration of Rights for the Indigenous People. It's a protected article, the United States is a is a signer to this under President Obama. And I will exercise it, I I will exercise it to the fullest extent. Nisitata para commodification. Todu manyekentusne, yinini ngoku, gini zan gi huzum. Puro commodification para amjuti tikumimpendi ofa commodification. Ma uusa i irencian tamoro, porofan ma matinasalapi po ma abansa sha. Lo man malefa na ifamagon tamoru zan i tamoru man majuti toti gisantati. Eni gi, mina ga hit.
Ms Haf Schneider, baby mainona sta kinsiminitus.
Ah, sizzusma si, bi naya one minute. Sizzusma si, madam president. Za gof magai makarisi sa bulan sisi. Zan i otu misappropriation. Misappropriation para ofak an appropriation ma petehisi ofak kumekilenia misappropriation. Ayti misappropriation salapi. Misappropriation of a sacred heritage, symbols and language. Hofa eno, eno ulu, eno ulu actually eno na na nu nu milazani gagi gini eno ulu gi totemu. Latsi eno, taza onru gi tamoru. Edzinadi bi i misappropriation uparas and appropriation of the sacred lang- heritage and language i atzulakti zan i finu tamoru. Basta man ma usa para o ma advance i maaluk so-called tourism economy. Ah nu ah all for the tourists and and all for money making. Za man malefa, na i man gayizu i man duenu, man ma man malefa sa man ita mas takilo gi social services. You name it, takilo kuntolen presu, takilo. Sissin ofisina anasitita qualifico na toto, ti kuak questioni qualifico nya as an educator. Lo qualifico nya as an indigenous resident executive for the Indigenous Affairs, she fall short. Pus eno na agagogo na porofan bo, nu uma punta si ah i governor u reconsiderzo apunta ma sha as a consultant to the office. Lo i resident executive sa guisan ofisina, sinia ma impeach. Gi todudu appointed position cabinet in the sinnema government, the resident executive of Indigenous Affairs gi zaha solo ma impeach. I i Carolinian Affairs Director, ti ma impeach za it's an appointed, it's a different layer. Estigi na layer ni tells you, that's why it's a constitutional mandate. Ah, sizzusma si, mina alu mizo ko testimony, zan mas elaborate nu hofa nu ginagomo nami lo fafacing. Na in in reconsider, i otu nanono para lutu zan tinian zan na public hearing. Fanuzun gi gi singso, ah tamanezun mizo downtown home meetings zan facing itouto sha. I man tamoru, no, sa lenya gi ofisina ni Carolinian Affairs acceptable to the Carolinian community. Pus estini, tafanuzun gi singso, zan gi isla za tafacing ko acceptable to the Chamorro community. Sizzusma si.
Sizzusma si, senyora Haf Schneider. The floor is still open for public comments.
Hi, welcome, thank you. Buenas, san half a day. I am so honored to speak to you today about the nomination for uh Siluella for this position. I'm Emma Perez, the co-founder and board secretary for Five Hundred Sales. I have worked with Crispin Ogo, Ramuntadella, Ross Manglonia. And now briefly with uh Siluella. What I have witnessed working with her directly is a commitment to the culture and the people. A way of getting things done that isn't divisive. Um, a loving, kind approach. And I respect that immensely because I don't necessarily have those qualities. And so I find that she helps me do what I need to do. As um my husband Peter said. I'm sorry that I don't look more like my dad and my grandmother. But I am Chamorro. I'm a Cruz Diaz Pereira Leon Guerrero Flores Ugan Perez. And what struck me most about the person that just spoke before me was that I only understood about five percent of what she said. My husband and I moved here over ten years ago starving for our Chamorro culture. I'm starving for the language. We came to build one boat and now we're over fifteen and we found a whole nother culture that can support the Chamoros get their canoes on the water. But I am still starving for the language. And we have already started discussions about how my brain isn't gonna get it. But the little ones on the beach are speaking English. And we need to get the language to the youth. And I see, I think that an educator in this position with this kind way of approaching problems and actively, proactively cutting through everything to get what is needed to the the constituents is um probably the best candidate that I've seen in in the time that I've been working with the Indigenous Affairs Office. So I I can't say enough about my intent to help and work with Indigenous Office and Luella to make sure that everything she needs to do, she can do. And I got some ideas about language to talk about later. Um, but I would hope that those in our community that have the gift of that language would find a way to use it. Use that power for good. And um I think that's what we're gonna be see seeing coming out of um the Indigenous Affairs Office. And thank you so very much for your time. I do want to just share one story about a conversation I had with um the late Ross Manglonia about two weeks before he passed. There was a conflict about something. We always have conflicts, not Ross and I, but just getting things done within a government bureaucracy. And my first go-to is is to try to to fight it. And Ross said, Emma, fighting doesn't work. What you need to do is figure out a way to do it with love. And then he was gone. And then Luella was there and I say, there you go. Do it with love. So thank you so much for your time and I support this nomination a hundred percent. Thank you.
Sizzusma si, senyora Emma Perez. The floor is still open for public comments.
Half a day. Uh, gohu si Deborah Fleming, toto Tini An. Um, I area where beautiful Marianas is a melting pot of different cultures today in twenty twenty-four. And uh like Emma said, we need love to be one, to move and drive this boat forward. We need love and to be one, a one and open heart and accepting everyone. Um, uh, just with being appointed. She has reached out to Tini An that it lacks uh participation in a lot of uh programs and are looking for active people um that would uh give their time, especially with with our language. That is, you know, sapma muffna sa ti takpraktika. And uh esta atututuun mu na no no kumula tamano ni sinia ma regla. Za afuera ki enao, ah laksi gi finu tamoru zan gi finu gi palo. And gi palo is not a bad word, it means indigenous, right? People of the land, and who are the people of the land? It is all of us. And we do these things for our children because that's how we will survive forward. So husupaputa si Luella. She she will be a good captain moving forward, I believe. Thank you.
Sizzusma si, senyora Fleming. I also welcome. I wanna recognize that Senator Donald had joined us uh a while back online. So he is present for this committee meeting as well. The floor is open.
Buenos dias, les sorbomai, magadangum magapo. Good morning, everyone. Uh, chairwoman, uh senators, you're uh, we're grateful to be here today and I'm also grateful to be next to a dear friend. Um, I uh am here to speak on not just my behalf, but on behalf of my wife Daisy and our four children who are indigenous. Unfortunately, as hard as I try, I don't have the bloodline. Um, but I do believe I have the heart. This has been my home for for the last almost fifty years. We've been grateful. My parents are buried here. I likely will be buried here, hopefully not for a while. Trying to get in better shape to be like John Gonzalez, cuz yes, he did beat us all in running and uh I'm gonna get him back on that. We're gonna challenge after school. Um, in all seriousness, I I'm here today to support a wonderful, loving, incredible person who I've known well beyond uh politics or anything since I was a young, young child. I, who doesn't know the Marciano family? Who doesn't know your brother Gordon, who's a celebrity here? Who doesn't know the wonderful things you have done, not just as an educator, but as a community volunteer? You have a huge heart. Um. And you've always been so giving and kind. So my children look up to you. They think of you as Auntie Lou. And whether we're blood related or not, you will always be the Auntie Lou and you will always be a sister to me. I thank you for that. And when we look at this qualif- for qualifications, the simple question is, does she qualify for this? More so than ever, more so than anyone. She's, she exceeds all the expectations. She's trilingual. And yes, she corrects a lot of us on a lot of things and that includes English. Even though that is my first language. Because my English is not always gooder than hers, but um, but in all seriousness, thank you for being such a wonderful and dear person to our community to, for your many years in public education, for for being there for so many of us. For being a voice, for being outspoken, but also for being so loving, kind, forgiving. And that's something that we seem to be needing more of these days, is this understanding. You know, I've lived here my entire life and I am grateful for the people I get to work with and and I'm grateful uh once you become the resident executives. Uh, I look forward to working with you as as always. My office is always open to you and my heart is always open to you. I am grateful for this time uh and uh I wish you the very best. And I'm very conf- confident in your confirmation with this esteemed uh chairwoman and her colleagues. I thank you for this opportunity. God bless.
Thank you, Representative Edwin Probst. The floor is still open for public comments.
Good morning, chairwoman and members of the committee this morning. My name is uh Trule Tefoga Gary Roseman Sword. And I'm, and like Ed Probst, I'm not qualified to sit here, but I'm a C- CSP. I'm a captured Samoan person living here. And uh my wife is not here, but she's making her way home. But on behalf of my wife and our family, we just wanna come in and say uh so a few words for uh Luella. Uh, she's, you know, for me, the most qualified. Number one, she went off to school, she got her master's degree. She could go anywhere in the world, but she chose to come home. Also, she wasn't born with a silver spoon in her hand, but she did it. She worked hard and got her master's degree. Lot of people go and they never finish, not looking down on anybody, but she persevered through hardships, through hard times, through poverty, through you name it. This family has been through it. And I know that because uh the celebrity back there is my co-host in the morning on the radio. But um, one of the things that I know about Luella that uh something that you cannot teach in school is that she has respect. She was taught respect, she lived respect and she exudes respect. And that's something you don't teach in school. And I've known her for so many years now through uh Gordon. And uh, you know, she even if she, people respect her, she respects them. Even if they disrespect her, she still respects them. And as you, as you, as you heard earlier with uh Emma Perez, that what better person to be in this thing, in this position to teach our community, our customs, to teach our language, to continue to teach our young ones to be Chamoros and to be Carolinians here in the Northern Marina Islands. But an educator, she has all the tools, her toolbox is full. And like I said, she has respect. She has deep respect for our community and for our language and for our culture. And that she brings to the table and again, that is not taught in school. So I asked this committee and also our senate to confirm her to the position of uh Executive Director for Indigenous Affairs. And I always uh say this when I come to the hearing and it's a female, um, that's going for the you have a hard job to do, hire a woman, she will get it done. They can do nine things at one time. Thank you again, God bless and Godspeed.
Sizzusma si, senyora Sword. The floor is still open for public comments.
If I cry, then I cry. Morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, buenos dias.
Senator Paul. Senator Green, everybody. Um, if mom would say, we grew up tough time. But she always remind us of our metralino, we are Chamorro. And also Carolinian. If I go further, let me explain first what is rafalowash, cuz everybody's talking rafalowash in here. Rafalowash, from my father's side. When when people started coming here, you pay homage to those islands they came from. That's rafalowash. Now, rafalowash born here, do you deny them to pay homage to where they're born? That's rafalowash. Yeah? Thank you, simple, that's that, how my grandfather put it. My mom always reminds us, give the Chamorro what is Chamorro. And give rafalowash what is rafalowash. But don't ever take and cross it, especially if it's not yours. Example, I was offered Carolinian Affairs office. I love my two cultures, but with respect, I cannot sit to lead the rafalowash. Cause I'm a Chamorro. But in this capacity, she is Chamorro. If it's about nine length of laws and what she has to do, what better person? Cause a woman who look between the lines. And as a woman, you need a woman to lead us, especially with what we are faced today. We watched this office been ridiculed, we've watched this office, you know. But they go in there like it's their office, of course it's our people's office, but we need to respect the office. Just don't go in there and treat it like it's your home and start, no, that's not how it is. Luella has always been one of my, I mean, when we compete, we compete to the length where somebody's gonna have to cry. But you know what? But you know what? The love that my parents gave us is respect. Not much, they ridicule us or, you know, chase us out of the place. I always say, it's okay. God don't sleep. I, you know, I'm very glad that she has supporters here and friends that are here and families that are here. But honestly, I know Luella will not sleep with given the task and that's what worries me about her. Because she's not going to give up. She will make sure that Chamoros are led the way are, that if given that opportunity, if you have time, go to her office, sit with her. Because honestly, I know that she's going to be reaching out to all of us, the families, to make sure that if nobody's with her, we are there as her staffers and we're ready. If you ask to do with culture, we got the best of the two cultures and we understand both cultures. You got to remember that our family tree started from Rora. Azuzu, Matantauto, Ngako. And today, so funny, Richi Harris. How is that? But to this day, my mother's word stands. Give to the Chamorro what is Chamorro and give to the Rafa losh what is Rafa losh. And the rest is God. It's in his hands. That's all. Thank you.
Excuse me, would you please state your name for the record?
Yo, I'm sorry. Gordon Ichiaro Marciano, my Carolinian name, Fatale Shro.
Sisus Masi, Senor Marciano. The floor is still open for public comments. If there are no other individuals who would like to make public comments, we will now close that portion of this hearing. And this afternoon, we will go back to public comments to hear the second nominee for today scheduled, Dr. Rohringer nominated for the Health Profession License in board. For the record, the, the committee did not receive any letters of support regarding Ms. Marciano's nomination. And aside from the testimonials today, the committee also received letters of support from Ms. Jonathan Pangolin and Cabra and Ms. Johanna Ada. We will now proceed with the new business for today. I now invite Ms. Marciano to please rise and raise your right hand. And the legislative assistant, Mr. Macarons would administer the oath to you.
Luella I. Marciano, you do solemnly swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you shall give in the matter at hand shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marciano. You may be seated. At this time, I will open the floor to Ms. Marciano. If she would like to make any comments to the committee and to the general public. The floor is yours, Ms. Marciano.
The floor is mine.
Floor is yours for comments.
Thank you, Sisus Masi. Sisus Masi, Madam Chairwoman Selena Roberto Babalta to the distinguished panel, Senator Paul Manglonia, Senator Donald Manglonia, Senator Karina Magovnia. And buenos insalud to the people of the Northern Mariana Island. Before I begin, I would like to give thanks to our heavenly Father for blessing us on this beautiful Tuesday. Thank you, Lord, for your continued protection and guidance. To all my friends, my family, supporters and family members that I did not invite, I thank you. I thank you all for being here. And for those that are, that took time, thank you so much. For the testimonies that you, that a few of you gave, either true positive or the negative, which I do take the constructive criticism. Thank you so much. Sisus Masi, Hili Soremi. To our Governor, Honorable Arnold Palacios, and Lieutenant Governor Honorable David Mundo Apetang. Sisus Masi, Hili Soremi, thank you both for your trust and faith. My name is Luella Ichiaro Marciano, the daughter of the late Dolores O'Donoghue Ichiaro Marciano and the late Ricardo Rashang Marciano, both from Saranca District Four. Growing up, like what Gord said, we're all taught respect. Culture is our way of life. It includes, it, it includes our values, custom language, beliefs and tradition. Culture is reflected in our history, in our heritage and in how we express the ideas of creativity. Most of you know our parents. They were both educators. They were both passionate about our Chamorro and Carolinian culture. My siblings and I were surrounded by music, dance and family gatherings. We were taught to respect our elders and most of all, our mother would always emphasize extending our helping hand to everyone. When I received the call from the governor, sixty-two days ago, to be exact, I did ask him if he was really sure that he wanted me to lead the office. I was enjoying retirement. And I do miss having that coffee time with my husband. But when you receive a call, especially from the governor, you ask yourself, how can we help our governor? How can we help our people? So I told myself, get in there. So I am here. I am reporting to assist one of our office under the Palacios Apetang administration. The Indigenous Affairs Office was established in June of nineteen eighty-five to the Second Constitution Convention. Article three, section twenty-three of the Cinemai constitute established the Resident Executive and is mandated with its duties and responsibility. We heard that from the beginning with C. Chairman Selena Roberto Babalta. Nearly forty years ago, on the final day of the Second Constitution Convention of the Northern Mariana Islands, Dr. Benista Regolofoy Caipan reflected on the work of the convention, saying that for him, their most important accomplishment was the creation of the Indigenous Affairs Office. An office which, and I quote, means to revive, retain, preserve and research the Chamorro and the Carolinian cultures, end of quote. Second Concon Journal, page eight five three. It is worth reflecting on the work of the Concon Delicates and their hopes ensure that the history, language, cultures and practices of those Northern Marianas descent, the Chamorro and the Carolinian would be uplifted and preserved for the generations to come. That at its core is a function of the Office of the Indigenous Affairs. The resident executive, his and her staff must work to preserve the Chamorro and the Carolinian cultures. On one hand, we must work to advance the aspiration of the Chamorro and Carolinian peoples. On the other hand, though the history of our island is the histories of the Chamorro and the Carolinian, we cannot forget those from other lands who have settled in our islands, who have made our islands their home, who work here, who contribute to our communities in manifold ways. We now have indigenous people who are a mix of heritage and I honor their stories as well. Though the Office of Indigenous Affairs will always prioritize the indigenous people of these islands, the office will also be open to working with all the people of the Marianas, partnering with other ethnic groups to ensure that we are lifting as we climb. Sisus Masi, Hili Soremi, and thank you all.
Sisus Masi, Senora Marciano. We will now begin the question and answer portion of this hearing. And at this time, I will recognize Senator Donald Manglonia first. Senator Manglonia. We can always come back to him. I can start. Ms. Marciano, since you've been appointed on February first, twenty twenty-four, what improvements have you made during your short stint so far at the Indigenous Affairs Office? And please elaborate for us what your plans are moving forward with the office, should you be confirmed?
Right now, we started with working on standard office procedures on what's itemized in the, in the office. For example, permits for the Chamorro Sensoong or Civic Center. We don't have any SOP for when we issue out permits, so that we are working on. We do have, we are also working with other nonprofits that have been coming in. For example, Mr. Lawrence Fleming. So we provided with documents he needed. We are working with five hundred cells as well. Outreach are still continuing with Indigenous Affairs. We still continue what the late Ross planned. We are still receiving requests from schools to have our artists or demonstrators to come in and demonstrate crafts or cooking. So we are still providing those. The very, for me, the very important thing that I am working on is budget. Right now, we are looking for funds to operate because we have zero funding. So we are working, we just submitted our snail proposal. I know that one of my staff is attending the Anna Grant Seminar that's happening, happened yesterday and today. So we will be working with a proposal of working on a grant for that. Part of our plan too is to, like what Ms. Emma said, we were, she called me up about a day or two ago, just out of the blue requesting about language. And one of our idea was to make sure that the Guma Higais down at Civic Center, we want to utilize those instead of just having it as a picnic area for the family, the community to use. I want to make it more functional by having each stage where one of the Higai can be a language class, a language, a language area where the students or anyone coming in and waiting for the canoe ride at Guma Sakman, instead of having the kids to stand around, they can travel down to the area where the Guma Higais are located at and they can join the areas, either go into the demonstration for food, watch the artists with the crafts or join the language class. So we are having, we are working on a grant. We do have, we already reached out to a teacher that is willing to come in and do that on her program. So the only, again, that we're facing is funding. So that, that is the plan, but one of the important thing too about the Guma Higa is in order for us to operate it, we need to reconstruct the top portion because it's not safe. Right now, when we pass by, it's all dilapidated. So again, funding, we're waiting for funding.
Thank you for that. You mentioned about the budget for IAO and the request from schools for cooking and arts and crafts demonstrations. How close do you work with the Arts and Councils? Because, you know, your office does lack funding to run programs or outreach, but Arts and Council is a, an underutilized office or program. And they have all the listing of registered artists in, in the Cinemai throughout the Cinemai, both in Tinian and Rota and here as well. And I ask that you collaborate with them so that your office doesn't have to be burdened with providing funding for the entire program, whatever program you envision for the Indigenous Affairs Office. So I'd wanted to, you know, bring that to your attention. Not to compare you with the former Resident Executive, the late Ross Manglonia, who was doing really, really well. But again, this goes back to budgeting. He was applying for funding for a lot of federal grants that your office can avail of. What is the status of those applications or are you familiar with any of them?
I am familiar with the Talaza project. There was a, a bad, bad project according to Mr. Tenorio, the down of the criminal justice. It, it was, the budget that was requested for that was close to forty-seven thousand, but it was in, they didn't appropriate that amount. So Mr. Manglonia did refuse the three thousand that was suggested. So we need to wait again. According to Mr. Tenorio, we can always submit another proposal. It is a good project because it deals with teaching our youth or the troubled youth in the, that are, in the, that are committed for them to come out. They have things to do. The, the only thing that we're lacking is the budget with that. But according to Mr. Tenorio, we can always resubmit to try again for next year in March. So we're going to do that. But as for DCCA, yes, we are collaborating with them. They are supporting us as well with us, a few of our projects. For example, the Regalo Project or the Lifton Project happening every Sunday down at Carolinian Affairs Office. DCCA Arts Council has been very instrumental in, in supporting our artists and demonstrators. They are funding that project.
Thank you. At this time, I will yield to Senator Donald Manglonia if he can hear us. Senator Manglonia. I'm sorry, we're having technical issues with trying to bring Senator Manglonia online to join us. So I will move on to the next member. We can still come back to Senator Manglonia. I will recognize Senator Magovnia. If you have any questions at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Ms. Luella Marciano. Congratulations on your nomination and thank you for accepting such a huge responsibility. And, you know, just thank you for accepting the nomination. I'm sure you've had some time now, I think like sixty-two days, as you mentioned, to kind of get yourself familiarized with the mandates of Article Three, Section Twenty-three, which is the position that you are being nominated for. And I think it's so crucial and pertinent before we even proceed with any line of questions, at least for me. Just in looking at that particular section, I counted how many times the word indigenous was on this particular document and I counted eight. So I wanted to ask you personally and professionally, what is your interpretation and understanding of the word indigenous? what is your interpretation and understanding of the word indigenous that's related to this particular article, right? So that, like, once and for all, we can move forward without any negative connotation or just any divisiveness? Because there's just so much of that kind of going on out there right now, and I just would really, I, I think it's so important that, that it's so clear, like, that it's clarified? And so that both sides of the culture can understand the significance of this position and office. I have my own interpretation of what I read in this particular article, but I would like to hear from you what, what your understanding is of, of a word that was mentioned at least eight times on this particular section. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Senator Karina Magovnye. Indigenous. Indigenous Paraguayo, it's Hazi Toto Tano. And Toto Tano Guini are the Chamoros, no doubt about that. No one, no one is questioning that. We will always have a division, sah, we lack the education and we need that. As long as we go out and we promote and we make our kids, our community, understand that there are both two cultures here and they have co-existed. I am a product of that. Maybe we just need to make them understand, just sharing what we, what we have, tamano staba, how life was back then. As long as the kids understand it, as long as the community come out and appreciate the, the cultures for the Chamoros, our visitors and our families, our children especially. We will always have that stigma of other groups saying which is better or the other. And we can't because we are diverse already. There's so many of us, we hardly find a pure Chamorro now. We always have, and it's not only here, it's across the globe. It's not only on Saipan or Tinian or Rota. Magai Girota, we still can find a lot of the ancient or Chamorro. Lo, Yini Gi, Gi Zasaipan, the Third Senatorial District, where we have a melting pot here. My children are one-third now because their, their father is Palau American. So, but even with that, we still advise them that, who they are. As long as we educate our kids, make them understand, they will learn and appreciate. But if we don't show them, then we will always have that stigma. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does, and thank you so much. It wasn't an easy one to ask, and I wasn't even sure if I was going to ask it. But I think it's so important, it's so important that we, once and for all, address the, the question or the concern as to who or what the indigenous is referenced in here, right? And there's no dispute whatsoever that the Chamoros were the first people to migrate here, right? There's no dispute about that, but then there's, was also the second, you know, migration of the people from the Caribbean Islands. And, and this is why I ask about that. Because for me, when I read this section of Article 3, it doesn't specify to me which of the two cultures is indigenous. It just says indigenous, you know? And I know I'm probably going to get a lot of backlash on this, but it's okay. Because I think it's important that we, that we address, right? And, and we just want to find the person who has the willingness, the commitment, and the temperament to take on the mandates of this section of the Constitution because it's so crucial that we continue to, to fulfill the mandates of this section of the article, right? But to also make sure that the preservation is there. And so, I truly appreciate your response to that. And so, now I can move on to the, the, the questions that are really pertaining to the mandates of this section. And I know it's, you've only been in there a couple of months, and there's a lot to take in, you know? From picking up where the late Mr. Manglonya had left off, looking at his plans and seeing where your plans kind of come together, right? I, I would like to ask, there's, when, when I was counting, there's at least eight line items that was detailed on this mandate. And I wanted to hear from you, which of these line items do you feel are a priority at this time or for the next four years that, that you will have to implement if they haven't yet? So, I guess my first question is, are any of these mandates have been implemented yet? And if not, which ones would you consider your priorities for the next five years, should you be confirmed? Thank you.
Thank you for that, Senator Karina. The first priority for myself is the Cultural Center, and that as well is the late Ross priority. I also believe that that is the first thing that I saw when I came into the office of Oscar Babauta. And he gave me a very thick folder, and the first thing that I saw on the top was the Cultural Center. As I read, as I skimmed through that, it is, it's long overdue. Enjoying the retirement back then, when we travel up and down, I would always often wonder what's the status of this area as Civic Center? So, I do know that we do have a project coordinator, Ms. Amber, and I know that our acting, our acting special assistant to the administrator, Mr. Paul Rages, is also working on that project with Ms. Amber. So, that one is our first priority. What we are lacking again is the funding. So, if we can get all of, of our leaders to work with us so that we can give our community some sense of allocation so we can celebrate and promote our culture, that will be one. And anywhere you go, if we say that we want to bring in the tourists, then where should we bring them to? What do we offer them? How do we promote aside from the hotels? How can we bring our entertainment, our artists back into the community so that we can enjoy them? So, we need that Cultural Center, and we do need the help of both the legislature and the Senate for you guys to prove that as well.
Thank you for your response, Ms. Marchiano.
Let me just add, I know that Mr. Ross too continued. I know that he completed the project for the Ladi, Ladi sites. So, we do have three existing Ladi sites that are being, that are still continued. We are working, collaborating with Department of Correction for the cleanup, but we still want to make it more appeasing to, to the community. And those are located in Cagman, right next to the school, the high school.
Thank you for that update. In looking at the, the line items for the mandate, one of them being coordinating the development, distribution, adoption, and translation of a comprehensive history of the Marianas. Do you, since you've been in there, do you know if that has been started or is it done or not yet started?
That one, I was looking through that. We recently relocated to the governor's office. So, the only thing that I have found was the Inetnon, Inetnon Omun, the archives and that. So, that, we need to make sure that those are preserved, preserve writings. We have cassettes for those. I will be reaching out to other agency to see how we can make sure that those are safe because some of them got wet. So, we need to make sure that those are preserved. There is a book that was made from those written documents. A lot of our, our practitioners have passed on, but we have a book from that. So, I'm not sure if you guys have a copy of that, but we do. That was a grant that was given, and it was done by C. Doctor Rehebe. Those were the group, Dr. Rehebe, Situn Manet Borja. Those are the group that worked on that. C. Cit Cabrera, C. Auntie Frances Sablon, and C. our famous practitioner, C. Uncle Donald Mendiola. So, that's one, but I haven't seen any comprehen, any other history. But I do want to also tie in where we need to visit our Caribbean Affairs Office because there's history as well, oral history from the Caribbean side, where they also talked about or tell stories of the Chamorro. That is not documented. We need to collaborate with that office so that we can get those history and written now. So, that is one of our, hopefully, our project as well when, for this four years, if given.
Thank you, and I'm so grateful to hear that because we have to work together and help each other in order to fulfill, you know, some of these mandates that are listed here. And who better to share those stories with us than our own brothers and sisters, right? So, thank you. I look forward to that. Hopefully, you know, there's time, there's four years, right? So, hopefully, that will be something that you could accomplish by the time your term is finished. I, I see one of, one of the items here, and it talks about assisting and promoting local entrepreneurial development. And you talk about the Cultural Center, right? And we also talked about tourism and, and basically our whole economy. But what better way to present ourselves to our visitors than to help promote and encourage our people, right? In pursuing entrepreneurship? We have so many skilled and talented individuals here from our islands, and this is what the visitors are looking for when they come to visit us. They want to see who we are, what we are, from food to, to arts and crafts, to jewelries, to laymaking and all of that. You know, I think that's one of the things that we are truly missing in demonstrating who we are as a people, you know? We're always trying to ask ourselves, how, how do we differentiate ourselves from all the other destinations that kind of pretty much, you know, have this, you know, the things that we have? Well, the one distinct, for me, the one distinct, something that we could offer them is the two cultures that are integrated, you know? And, and despite, you know, how some people feel about it, it is what it is. And we, we are just so connected in one way or another that we cannot undo that. And, and it's not just here, it's everywhere else. This is the melting pot of our Micarinian Islands, and so we need to embrace that, and we need to be proud of it, and we need to help each other out. So, I would really love to ask if you could, you know, put some focus on that line item to assist and promote our, our local entrepreneurs so that we can start presenting ourselves as, as a people of the Marianas, both Chamoros and Caribbeanians. And that's all I have for now, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Magovnye. We will try one more time with Senator Donald Manglonya. Senator Manglonya, if you can hear us? I guess he won't be on today. Okay, it seems that we are unable to get Senator Manglonya, Donald, online, so we will recognize Senator Paul Manglonya at this time.
Si, suzumasi, Madam Chair. Buenas, si, suzumasi, como que hemos venido, nos presentamos bien en este comité. Luella, de, de faisono, no. Para ezi, mangai dinida, gi, gizaogo, n'esti pon, pon gi lui, Indigenous Affairs Office, pori, mis clau, nu haga mo, ne, si na taolo. Malago, nu, comentus di di di, por eno, kau, 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 dinifecta i posisyon mu, pon represente i kulturant Chamorro, seka nu guini sa, ma, kolang ma pepe sa esti na gua Caribbeanian Affairs, gua Indigenous Affairs, za i Chamorro, nu ga gi gi papa Indigenous Affairs, no, i pon arban samona i kutura, i lingua i, nu, nu, kau, kau, gua pro bemomo, ne, no, nu, como, como, nu, Carolina no, den Chamorro, malago m'explica, no, nu, da, tau ngu fa ni posisyon mu, gueno. Benao, ne, no, na putenidad, pon, pon sangan, si nen temu, gueno.
Sus, suzumasi, Senator Manglonya. I question, geno, kau?
Para ta, na klaro esti, ne, nu gi si nen temu, kau, kau, gua dinifect, amen, kau, si, si na noi confianza i, i Chamorro, na, na kutura, na, basia nu, amen, nu hafa nu, i zo mu strength, ne, gi ni na posisyon, ne, ago pon gi lui esti, nu para ezi man duda gizaogo.
Kulang, ti ma puti, no, mata opi, lo, as an educator. The role is a cool role, gi ni as an Indigenous Affairs. U komprendi na, ta zuda mona i toto Chamorro. And I know that. Kulangi zi, ta sangana, Ozimas, Ozimas, Ozimas impuntanti. Lo, gi ni gi tanota, devi na ta komprendi na, ta komprendiya na Chamorro, finenina ta zuda, right? Ta si na ha, ta zuda, or hungan ta zuda. Lo, zangin ma lum, lo ki ne, ma lum i Caribbeanian, za man, man mangogo, sa i plono ni hafa u plononu papa, ti ba malefa lo ki ni i ochu, na taotogui, ni sia lo ki, esta malilingo, lo gagaya man memegurha. Pos ba atan lo ki tamano, ba, inina lo ki tamano, na memeguna, hafa rasona man memegurha gi ni, sa por gagaya i lingua ni, i zu niya language. Ita gi ni, on the language part of the Chamorro, esta ma, malilingo. Pos, for me, as long as I understand, easy, as long as we make it a balance and bring it and teach it and promote it, and to understand easy, your identity, so gua komprendi na I'm both. I cannot, I cannot say that my Caribbeanian side overrules my Chamorro side. I cannot even say my Chamorro side overrules my Caribbeanian side. It will always have to be the same. And can I do it both? Yes, I can, because we have always done that. In my family, we have always done that. We understand mom's culture, we understand dad's culture. Can we perform it? Yes, we can. We come in and we do mom's culture, how it's, how we learned it, and we're teaching it to our kids. We come in and also teach our kids our dad's culture, well, how we learned it, and we're keeping that tradition. But we cannot, I could never say, just do a Chamorro because you're Chamorro, can never do that. And maybe it's hard that a lot of people or a few people will say the fair. will say the fair or talika, sa ti, pure Chamorro. Lo, devi ta kumprendi. Uno na kuttura, kumuta atan, machulinio site, I am a Chamorro. That's the reason why we always say Chamorro Carolinian, which we are. And when we go into our community, in the Rafalos community, they do understand that, hungan, we can, we can talk it. We, we know how to talk the language, speak it. Lo, como matan, we're really not, oh, i sa, i sanaza ino shana, la lifor or i sanaza ino shana, na, gopala, or totosanaza ino shana, so, na Carolinian. But we, we understand that, we, we know the difference because we're both. I hope that answers your question.
Ay, si Jesus mase, na, na, na explicacion. Pos, pos taza, taza implemento, taza senti, no, na itisi, para un misturban, por una ban samona. Para i kutturata, gi, gi todit isla, gi, tinian lutan sa ipan, no, kontu bo.
I'm, I'm comfortable because I understand, I know my identity, I accept both, I am both.
Okay, si, si Jesus mase, no, si Jesus mase, ne, no, pe, no. Be- befaesino, siña, nispikazi, sa, no, si su tau ngu, esti cultural center, cultural center, no gi, utugana, si sentai dos dia sawa, geno, na posisyon. A- a- hafa nu, hafa i plano, para, uh, i ju si ai man ekingo, saka su geno zun. A- hafa nu, i ju pomatsogi, gi civic center, na cultural center, dan dan, a fortuna plano, gi put cultural center, utugana, un mensiona di di di, lo, siña pa seno, no no, na ishi, puri, i, pata ban samona, i kutturata.
I, izi gat gi civic center. Uh, the proposal is to put up the auditorium or the performing uh auditorium. Kumu ta, ko lang parewa, za ni zi, i auditorium, i memorial park. Lo gaha, lo ki plano, sa gaha gi, essa gaigigi, i gumaigai. Gi gaigigi, sa con- uh, contentasi. Pos izi gumaigai, ti ma pa sa. Lo izi apago, gi presenti, sempri ma oksa ulu, izi auditorium. Pos si si na auditorium, o, o gaigiza, it's like a show, uh, a stage. A stage for our performers. Ni, siña ma tsogi zuña, uh, bailan Chamorro or their chants where people can come and enjoy and see. Pos gaha lo ki, galamizi, izo ta cultural center. Gaha lo ki, lugat ni, pomatsogi, i, i herbs. I, omutsia ni, pomata nomgi. Pos uh, it's a, it's a really nice uh, a project. Lo gagaya, i gumaigai. Gaigia sempri lo ki, five hundred cells. So it's more like a, a daily operation where we can have our artists and then use the gumaigais to further. Siña tanoi, uno na nonprofit, zo utzogi, hafa malagonya, kumolinguae para y ocho, i saganenkano, lo, i kumugaha, hafa xena, okashon or flame tree, essa gaigia lugatagi. It's almost like a village.
Closest in a, a auditorium, or?
Ay, sempri ma babay si na auditorium, ko langa, i auditorium, i memorial park. Izita lilline, pos gaigia, lo ki, zuña stages, i zuña dressing, gi santati. Pos sa look, na kumomanazan, izan na lugat, siña ta usai zi gi flame tree, uh, taste of Marianas. Lo, it's more like a park for us to use, for the community to come in and sit down and use. Enjoy other nonprofits or other ethnicity are welcome to go ahead and uh use that facility. Kuma malagonya, pomatsogi zuña ban, uh, siña ma, uh, usai zin na lugat.
Taza plano, te gi gi, izi American Memorial Park, ilinis taba, para gua gi ma designe, para cultural center, taza, no, plano gi watu, o, taza utu banda, no, ne gua. Plano, pomana permanente, no, cultural center, no.
Taza, taza plano gi segenti, paga gi memorial park. Sa tatugana, zangin ta usai zi, paga na park. Gaha, izi security, nete, tanisita tapo, lu papa. Pos, for now, IAO, Indigenous Affairs and CAO. Gaha izi kada domingo, gi government payday. Tanagua, gua ha izi, i regalos, za ni lift on project. Kada domingo, domingo payday, uh, from five to nine PM. In kombina i comunidad, zo fanmattu, zo mali. Siñas, you have a chance to view artists, our crafts, our uh coconut weavers. Our sinahi makers. Pos gaha lo ki, authentic uh indigenous food, like cybo klemmai. Tamalez gisu, they do the demonstration. And then we also have performing arts, like uh, foksei, uh, foksei group and uh, si mesan Chamorro, they come in and they do the performance. And everyone is invited.
Um, be- befaesino, esti, um, sa un sangan, put budget, ne. No, gi pagu, gi, gi, ne maolumo, taza hafa na cooperation, za ni MBA, ne, para huma ban samona, programamos ya. Ta, da, gi, za, gi si nen temu, kau, gi public land, na ne, pomarunueva, i i coro ocean point, gi ni, no, pa, pa gua public hearing next week. Ti ma, uh, consultahau. Hafa na, na manera, ne, siña ma zuda programamo, gi underzunia public contribution. Taza, taza, no, shana, na discussion, no, gi entalu mizu, za ni public land or, or i MBA, ne, siña gua, on ma zudamzu, gi, para i artist ya, or programan mizu.
Si, mase, ni, no, na question, uh, Senator Manglonya, hungan. I DPL, uh, gaha, izi public land leases from all these uh rentals, gi ni, ni público, i land leases. Gaha salapenya, uh, ni pomanoi indigenous affairs. What we're doing now is just waiting. Tanananggahan, na pomarimit gatu, i salapi gatu, i oficina. Uh, utuguna, sa i, si secretary tercita, uh, Apatang Santos is working with our office to see and uh CAO to reach out to the businesses that have committed. For example, i global, i Marianas Global, Hyatt Regency. I ocho, i uh Crown Plaza. And then in no nuevo pago, i swasu. Uh, we do know that, um, gaha public land leases, sempri ma manoyami salapi, lo gi presenti. Taza tarabia, uh, i, uh, gua hados na company, that they have already contributed for the year. Uh, which is annually, lo, uh, izi dunkulusiana, salapi, izi taloki, hundred thousand dollars. Tarabia, tinilisa, and we're hoping we can get that sooner so we can move forward with uh our projects. So for now, we're still waiting.
Utuguna, gua diferencia gi, si, i talo, loco businesses, za n'esti kuttura, lo kan na todo zisha, i man bi business gi ni, no. Miscl- uh, ma seya, lo ki, man involve gi culture, ne. Za, ba, ba, i, i mo na concession, zo za si sistu mensiona. Ono, gi ni gi hotel xia, gi public land. Bula na, na hotel, no, mama na kikila, public land. Lo, no mono, para on, boka gi restaurant mia. Ni hafa na fruta gua, izi man ma import, na chandia, melun, za nonidu, ne. Taza, ne, ma jurist xia, lan, lan cheru xia. Ne, ta na gua, abas, artis, no, ma paza, no, za alageta. Taza, no, za, siña, no, na olum gi, gi zo mu program, za no, ajudozi zi xia, i tautauta, geno, ne, man, la lansu zun, za siña na gua, grupun mizu, za, amzin, pro babay guati hotel, za no, uno lo ki, gi ni gi, an gua bisitata, gi ni zun, izung, no. I, an mali restaurant, i tanota xia, man olum. Ma experience xia, i kuttura, no, matuguna, istigi xia, na fruta, ta promomot, za dugi, ma seya gi fenot Chamorro, hafa nanya xia, fruta, za, 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 ma, ma senti, no, sa no, anamato mogit, gua ne, no ko lang ti masasono, i, i business loco xia, gi tourism, no, za temanu, ne, siña ta, ta, ta judozi, lan cheru xia. No, tautauta, bulat manga, gi, atana, bulam, ma pro flor xia. Rokun manga, lo, on, maolumo gi hotel, taza, non li, gi zuña buffet, ma surf. Manga gi banda, taza, za, siña moni, tautauta, ma mambebe di watu, no. Pos, ko lang, gua geno, disconnect, no, ti, ti man, i tautauta, no, ti masasono, gi, gi gi konumian turista, za, za, no, maoli gi, ma mensiona, lo ki, ma mension, por linguae. I, i, gua xia, sta paragun oficina, pa, no, gi bat, lasan bat konairi. Taza, ne, ma pegan, no, signis xia, no, na, no, gi fenot Chamorro, na, za gi Carolinian. Za, inigis xia, guanabe, ne, ne, inigis, tumutuni, interesi, fa magunta, pau ma interes, pa van fino Chamorro, pa Carolinian, i ma, ma pinapangun, ne, ju xia, i signis, kumali, gi talan, no, gi building, no, gi pa gi building gubernamentu xia. Pos, taza, no, befaesino, na, no, enegis xia, no, on, tsagi lo ki, pomon, mona. Za, ta, ta fanavi, i fa magunta, no Ane, ta ta ita izi, i, bena, kada da, no chair, esta, utugasi. Ane, ta ta ita izi, gi, i, auriku, three, section twenty-three. Gi, si Doctor Kaipan. Ko lang, ma malefa zu, na, la ni, membru zu, gueno, gi second concan. Manami, za nenos xia, no, na membru, ne, za magaid, gi na tempo, no, no, gi eighty-five. Beti obi, no, tu go kumprendi, beti, i, i significación ni kuttura. Lo, magaid, no, senti gi na membru xia, na, 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 performatsu, mona. Kumu uno xia, membru, za, tiu, tiu, tiu senti, geno, i division, ne, gi gi, gi Carolinian, za Chamorro. Za, butchumas, genin lutazu, za, taza, gi Carolinian, ti megay, ne, za no, do bankula zu, lo ki, guam, za Chamorro, alo ki, gi, ti megay Carolinian, za magaid, ne, 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 matu zo, mogi, ko lang, dos tres años, pos, mo membru zu, geno, gi second concan. No, senti, azzi, gua Carolinian, gua grupun Chamorro, lo no, geno, na tempo, no, no, beti, ma, pos, takilu zi, para fanaha, kumprendi. Zeno, mi na, uno na risutu, geno, izi bandera, ne. Ne, ne, matuleka bandera. No, za staba, la listona, pos, man na olum, i, i, i ji momo. Pos, geno, na tempo, ne, ma boat, no, ti, taza controversy, ne, za no, 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 taza, megay na discussion, ne, no, ni, pomadapta, ne. Pos, beti, geno, na tempo, ne, no, no, surudano xia, ta, kumu si, si Richard, and si ya na beti, man aigi, geno, taza, geno, na tempo xia, ne, ne, zi, pa ma, pa onu, ne, na discussion, lo lo, magaid, na, na, geno, na tempo, ne, 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 ma, ma, pa sa, no, gi convention, ne. I sinenti, i spiritu, i, i, para fan dany, etautau, ne, za, tiu senti, no, no no, ju za, in fact, geno, na tempo, no, gua lo ki, ne, ufaesin, ma, ufaesin, i mangatsogu gi xia, hafa, na, na, ti, ma pareo, za Palau. Ne, ne, xia, no, ti, man, ti, ti, zi, man US citizen, ne, or, pareo, za Marshall Island, or, i FSM, ne. Lo, pos, ke, pos, usentina, itautauta, geno, na tempo, malago, man Americano, za utugasi, ta, geno, na na sepichi, na kafishia, kuttura, sa, sa, za nginista, tababay, ne. Ti pareo, za Palau, FSM, za Marshall. No, ne, ne, xia, gumuvena, maisa xia, mas, ne, ma xia, independent, ki ni hita, ne. Pos, inigis, i sacrificio, beti, gi, 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 izota xia, gi manamkota, geno, xia. No, ma fatinas, na decision. Za, no, pos, zige, na, na, ina sukona, tumeguini mona, i gubernamentota, ne. No, pos, no, taza, urxexia, na, na, u, as we mature mona, mas, ne, i gubernamentota. U, u, ta fanunoa, enoa. Za, lo, preciso, i oficinao, ne. Sa, oficinao, inigis, para, mungana, ta fanmalefa, para ta, para ta, na fanmanu, ifa magunta, no, ne, kutturata. Pos ma xia, bulat, inelaika, dan, no, no, no ti, ti pareo, za nantisista, no, ya gata, sa matuleka. Lo, para ta, ku, para ta, rimama, na ta ti, na, mangirin manuit mogi. Pos inigis, ikadgo mu, geno, za, ezu, na, ma xia gua division. Lo, gi, za gua, pos, na menti, utuguna, ona siña chezu. Pos, taza, enoa, si Jesus mase, Chair.
Si, Jesus mase, Senator Paul. Uh, sumatsaga, center Donald Manglonya, obviously, no gua problemonya, i either interneti, tatugu hafa, lo, sumatsaga, hu maolum pa'gu. Sa, uh, ding, uh, message, zu, na uh, kumekantu sa gi, lo, ti siña tahumu, gi, gi ni, gi, i chamber, lo, um tomo simputet, hanoid, zu ni questionnya xia, para hogu, senora Marchano. Lingan, no, does the Indigenous Affairs Office, um, keep track of NMDs? Kontuna NMDs, ta, no, man ma register?
Si, mase, uh, Senator Babauta. For the office that I'm holding. I do not have any records of NMDs. Taza. Lo, hungan, tanisusitai, no, na, na register.
Uh, gua haga, gi presenti, no, registration para i NMDs. In fact, i election commission, gumogotin, no, na records, sa no, uno na recommendation, esti, ani man hona, mi, para luta, esti na comitea, man hona, para luta last week. Por ma, conducta, otro na hearing, gi za luta. Uno na recommendation, no, humuzung, gi ni, i nominee, i ma, apunta last week, na no, ma seya, i oficinao, uma inkatganesti. I, para, no, monitor, kontu, za, pora, para i oficinao, u u konsigiji, ma register, i, hadzi xia, man NMDs, cosa ki siña propio, na i ofesmo, i indigenous affairs, u, kinatgastin, na, na mandate. Ti election commission, gi, segun gi, ina sukona, propio, para u u, para i oficina ni indigenous affairs, u, u maneasti, no za debidin fatuotsu, za ni Carolinian affairs, za esta i constitution ha define hadzi, man NMD guini. Za sa sono, i, i comunidad, i Carolinian. Lo qui, as, ginna, Senator Donald Manglonya, no hafa faesino, poron fatuotsu, za ni MBA, por esti, i, i, ta olok, no uh, cultural shows. Uh, megay basis, za disti pa'gu, talilia, gi hotel xia. Za ngin gua, cultural shows. Ti kutturan Chamorro. Ti kutturan, no, Carolinian. Ma, ma babayla, gi hotel xia. Sa ma ke kidder, to tourist. Ti kutturata, out of, you know, with all due respect, I love the Polynesian culture. Lo, ti kutturata, ta partiti ka ti pu, ti kutturata, ta no, ta display le, para i tourist, ya. Za segun gi, ina sotan, ne, ko lang lazi, no. Devidi kutturata, ma, ma advance, alo ki, para i tourist. Pos inigun, uno na recommendation, ginna Senator Donald, i perin fanmatsuotsu, za ni Marianas Visitors Authority, kosinian, no, ta promote moss, i kutturata, xia, gi ni. Uh, lo qui, ginna Senator Manglonya, Donald, uh, what are your plans to extend uh indigenous services? Particularly to the municipalities of Tinian and Roda?
Si, mase, Senator Donald Manglonya, dan Senator Babauta. Um, gi presenti, taza, zota representative, hungan, uh we are working with, uh, Giroda, we're working with Crispin Ogo, i DCCA representative. He's been very instrumental. Uh, we have also reached out to Ms. Aubrey. Uh, pos gi presenti, we are helping each other, uh, joining their uh Zoom meeting. Uh, pus gi presenti, we are helping each other uh, joining their uh, Zoom meeting or their Google meet, meeting every Wednesday at three o'clock sa i Gilitai uh festival. So we are working with them. Lo in the future, como gaha i budget alao, we would like to also have a representative there so we can um, si afagi ni inseggi malagon momi loki na i tinian zani luta loki u parehu mona. In that way, we celebrate the same. Uh.
Thank you. Um, za eno na plano sa fuera ki man hita man danya man matuotsu sinialo ki man edzakit gini ni uh, luta zan tinian hafa sia nu mapartitika loki gi gatu sa sinia biti gua mapartitika geno shana municipi, municipalidad za hita gini nu titagogo na i anten, attention pat hafa. Nu edzo loqui i uh, fuera ki MVA or guaha uno na programa gi Mariners Visitors Authority. Man, man, sa certify tour guides. Uh, podrasonun liginian na debi di hadzi poro tour guide gini debi di utungu pori kouturata, historiata za ukeke komprendi. Afana i MVA edzu kumakatgana programa. Segun gi afaman masanganin momine an inagnoalumis ti sa pa bin diskuti no sia. Nu ilengyan na taza utu ne gi ane ipago matutunidzo na programa. Taza utu na ofisina kumadka edzu i, za debi zan precisely na u matungu i historiata gini gi zan Marianas zan i kouturata sa ti sinia na para utu na na shon u famanono gi para u nan na tour put itano ta zan ginti makomprendi. I lugat zan hafa kumekelengya. Hafa na signifikasyon edzo na, na pati gitano para hita. Pus za loki na unhataneno. Uh, loqui gina Senator Manglonia, fuera ki i, i arts council estamona zan ta nu sangan dididina nu infamatuotsu zani MVA. Loqui i, i, the other resources available to you are Department of Lands and Natural Resources, i Language Commission, i Department of Public Lands. Todustisha na ofisina hai embrarasha za hapapatsa put kouturata. Za debi di u gaha ina dahi zan protection. Kosa kisinya ifamagonta ni manata ti ne uma kontenua prumatika. Zan sumilebra i kouturata. And nowa gini nas uh, Senator Donald Manglonia, I will yield to other members if they have uh, further questions. If not, Senator Paul, do you have any follow-up?
I isti bangnan homestead ta, ne. Nu utu, um. Guaha si Senator Kurina zunya bill actually, right? Senator, tu tuga fazi number zomo bill. Nezi para taminda i, i article um eleven nezi kosa kisinya nu, nu i DPL ma usa salapi uh, public land leasesia revenue for homestead. Um, atapan edzu za, za appreciate kumu sinia kumomen amzu sa megana biyane ma oluk na i, i revenue gini itano, i, itano itaut, iti tautautano, ne. Nu, nu debi di hono watu para i tautautano. Pus gi presenti gi constitution ililingyan na, na i increase incomea manana ekwatu gi gi general fund, pus gi general fund ma usa ma sia hafa nu malagonia ilislatura. Lo edzuna bill ililingyan na antis di wonau i, i salapi ekwatu gi Mariners Public Land Cross. Sinia homes i DPO ma usa para homestead za inasuku na nu guaminolengye no, no sa sempie nu momenos wati salapi para i MPT za mas ma usa watu para i homestead. Za hadji man manasa homestead i, u guma gi homestead i tautautano, no. Pus kolan atapan eno za, za bulan loki eno shane ma, ma chuli mogi patension momine i bandan nu i salapi MPT. Lo isina bill anti di wono watu gi MPT ililingyan na uma usa para programan i homestead za eni programan homestead sinia maholungu geno loki talan nu infrastructure honum zan sewer. Nu ne poma pega i, i fondo antis di uma entrega watu i MPT. Pus za ona kumu maoluma genoa atapan eno za nu tahtan isti na, na problema i housing itano, gini gitano ta sia. Sanema nagua gini hearing gini gi, gi, gi para i CNCA na confirmation. Nu mama sanganiam nagua zi na tautauta ne tautautano sia. I gini fifty years ago manyaga gi section eight. Pus mismu edzu na familia i next generation manyaga, man gaigia gi na guma i next generation zan italu i presenti na man hubinia sia talu matkikila. Anuk na tigef molik birarata kumogubernamentu para ta address edzu sia i man nama si na tautauta ne ne manisita zudu gi, gi homestead o gi gima sia ne. Pus anne guma ishi na programa i Dr., disaster relief. Bulama majuda gitano ta mas, nu maski tresentus antelaatio. Lo ti man saona gi programa dizia i tiutungu teman manu na ti man chinalau dizia na prohimu sia i munisita zudu pa guma. Lo ti leleko ne izi man manapika za man manai ti ma disurf, ma disurfa bintene lo. Afana na, na igua emergency programa ti man kinubri dizia i mas, mas man namaseta gi kominedatta. Inasuku ne inigi sumahalu ma eno gi programamune geno gi uh, Indigenous Affairs. Pus malago zo non fatuotsu zani ofisina ni food stamp, ofisina ni housing. Atan ozenu se mas manama si gi kominedatta ne. Za gingwa sia na programa sia fini na ta zuda. Ma keke baba talu guasiha homestead. Luta tinian nan saipan, lofa nan saipan tres, ko, ko, tresentus gua. Moli gane uh, nista ma setresentus gua lo kosinianu kinubri dizia i mas manama si, zepa sta judozi za ufan, ufan manai loan or afana housing assistance ne. The sia no fan podung dizia na, na tano zan guma ne. I mas munisita afana sia di man gaigia decades later man gaigia gi sinati i zunya great grandfather or great or grandfather or manyana ni lo mismu sia zonava magun mangai gi gi na sapagu ti sinia man huzunggi na na shurku ne gi uh, para ofan majuda gi man banguma, no. Enoa, u dispenso usasangan isti sa, sa nu sesu na be gua zi programa, no, zapus para ti ban, chuka bandanguma or bandan afana utuk programa gi, gi bandamfirirat. Guane sia utumu mantina takat dizia na prohimusun. No, senoa, Jesus Masi, che.
Jesus Masi, Senator Paul. Uh, taza sta mas questiona gini ni komitea. Uh, gini mismu tempo za na be dismissal para paga na. Ogan, Jesus Masi, nion zuti tempo mu zan i familia ammu todru zan i saputarolmu. Uh, para infamato mogi za uma tendisti na hearing. Jesus Masi.
Thank you.
It is now twelve twenty-four PM and this committee will stand in recess until two PM this afternoon.